Welcome. I'd like to call this April 8th, 2019 council meeting in order. We have a special guest. Jason Darrow is going to lead us in. The pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jason. Now, Jason, he's a little bit of recognition here this evening. He's a young gentleman that's a freshman at Medina High School. He's currently carrying a 4.63 GPA, which I think is maybe higher than any of us had. I don't know. Check that out. He's not yet an Eagle Scout, but he's pursuing an Eagle Scout honor and a badge. And he's going to complete his project. And he contacted us here and is going to help out at City Hall, one of the departments, learning a little bit more. I think it might be the Parks Department, which is very, very nice. He's a Life Scout. And I think you've been accepted to West Point? Is that true? Or you want to go to West Point? Well, I guess there's a difference there, but that's a good, a good goal to have, to go to West Point. And I hope you achieve your goals. And we appreciate you. And I hope the city works with you and helps you out in your, your goals. And I hope you maintain the Eagle Scout status. So, so welcome and hope you enjoy it. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Ring of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I would like to move that the minutes of the March 25th, 2019 regular meeting that was very efficiently run and one of our shortest meetings ever with no issues, that the minutes as permitted by the clerk be approved.
I second that.
Well, I guess it was a great meeting. You know, I heard a lot about it. So, congratulations on that. Will the clerk please call the roll and approve the minutes?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Abstain.
I wasn't here.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Six years, one abstention.
Reports of standing committee. The Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will meet again in two weeks. Health, Safety and Sanitation. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee met tonight prior to the Finance Committee meeting with a update from our Service Director, Nina Pacoli, on our sanitation budget. Nino, not Nina. Nino Pacoli, with an update on our sanitation budget and on the recycling program that we, what we talked about. Thank you.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. I have a meeting scheduled on Monday with Special Legislation meeting on Monday, the 15th of April, 7 o'clock with Girl Scout Crew from Ella Canavan. And we are going to discuss issues related to reducing solid waste and single-use plastic bags, an issue that they brought up on October 8th last year. They came to City Council and talked about. And so they're going to come and talk to us about those things. And we're going to have a discussion on those issues as well. And hopefully, in the next two weeks, I'll be able to give you a date to when we'll be back with the legislation on LGBTQ that we talked about last year.
Thanks. And we've been working on that with the City of Akron, just trying to get some information. And that's what's been delayed. And we still don't really have a direct answer, but I think we can get more information after speaking with Mr. Huber. I had a chance to talk to the Law Director, I guess. He was mentioning to me Eva Balfonts. And hopefully we can get some better information and direction from the-
Right. Then we can schedule the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. We moved the South Broadway Brick Reconstruction to Finance Committee, which we just talked about downstairs. And we voted to not assess the residents for the reconstruction of the brick roads. And we will be moving, I believe this can be Finance as well then, to get rid of the current ordinance that sits in place for those roads and create a new one.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mr. Starcher?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this time, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no meeting, excuse me, nothing to report and no meeting scheduled at this time, although I am looking to try to schedule one here by May 15-ish.
Thank you. Request for council action. We have sub for Finance, 1966 expenditure over $15,000 for fire safety services. 1967, a then and now for Pratt Co. Fire Department. 1968, a general liability insurance renewal for USI. 1969, amend planning and zoning code, expand downtown parking district number one. 1970, bids for job number 1033 Lafayette Road sidewalks. 1971, agreement with Ohio Edison, removal of poles and relocation. 1972, city parking structure, building design, build, design, design, build contractor. 1973, real estate purchase agreement for vacant land on South Elmwood. 1974, revision to job descriptions and men 3107 of salaries and benefits code. 1975, budget amendments. And 1976, increased expenditure to MNJ Technologies for the MCRC. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, an update, the parking deck that's going to go immediately south of Medina City Hall here out towards Liberty Street, and then from Sully's Patio to the Federal Building on the corner, is going to start, excuse me, this May. That's going to make the parking non-existent in that lot there, next to Sully's, as well as at the City Hall, both for staging areas as well as construction. We do have long-term lots available at the southeast corner of West Liberty Street and South Elmwood, just north of the Moose Building. The city is looking to purchase. Finance approved it tonight. Another lot, one block south of that, in the 200 block of South Elmwood, across from the Auto Parts Store, as well as we have the existing parking deck behind the Common Please Court, and some available spaces immediately off Liberty at the County Administration Building. The project is expected to last from May to likely December. So, just plan on that. I attended with Medina County Economic Development Committee a press conference where a group is coming in to take Medina County fiber actually to homes. They're going to start in Seville, as well as Guilford and Westfield Townships. They expect that build-out to last about 18 months. However, the plan is to install throughout Medina County with projected completion in five years. The demand and prioritization will be based on consumer surveys requesting the services. And to take the surveys, I know this is one of the things I've had a lot of complaints about, of having a sole provider in the city. This will be for phone, for TV, for Internet, and anything that they can bring across the fiber line. So to take the survey, we're asking residents to go to www.madinafiber.com. You must enter your address first, and then the next option will, will bring the survey up. And what it asks is what kind of services you're, you're being provided now, the cost of those services. And that's what they're going to use to generate interest in where to move to next. The group doing it is called Broadband Neighborly, and it's partnering with iFiber on this project. And Medina County, as you can imagine, is an attractive market due to the publicly-owned fiber ring already in place in our county due to the investments of Medina County and the cities of Medina, Brunswick, and Wadsworth. So because that fiber ring is already in place, in most places, they have to establish that, that backbone structure. In our case, they, they can literally go from there right to the neighborhoods and begin the implementation. So that saves them a great deal of money as well as a great deal of time. And then last but not least, our city weekly newsletter. The City of Medina earned a 2018 Constant Contact All-Star Award, and it recognizes the most successful 10% of Constant Contact customers. We have only, we have over 1,250 subscribers, and the open rate for our newsletter is 50%, which is extremely high. And I'd just like to read a quote from Holly Scott, Vice President of Customer Success. And she said, "The campaigns created by this year's All-Stars demonstrate that regardless of its size, a business or community can accomplish their marketing goals, and we celebrate the City of Medina's impressive achievements with this All-Star Award." If people are interested in signing up for the newsletter and you haven't yet, if you simply go to the city website, www.madinaoh.org, there's a link there to, to sign up for the newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, first of all, my usual reminder that all city residents are required to file a city income tax with, return with Rita. Rita collects the tax for us. Those are due by April 15th. This is the April 8th meeting. So if you're watching at home and you haven't done that yet, that would be a good time. You can get the forms online. We also have paper forms here at City Hall. And they had several opportunities to help people with their taxes. I attended the, both of them. The last one was on Saturday. There were 90 people there within an hour of when it opened. And we flowed through pretty well and got everybody taken care of. So that's my announcement on that. And then if you would allow me to make a personal announcement, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm happy to announce that Bryson Richard Joshua Durham was born on March 28th. He's my first son. And Deanna is doing well. And Bryson was a little early and needed a little respiratory support. He was in NICU. And he's going to come home tonight.
That's wonderful. Did I hear that he wanted to go to Michigan? I wasn't sure about that. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates. The New Spring/Summer brochure will be available online by this Wednesday, the 10th. Copy will be in your post newspapers this Saturday, the 13th. And hard copies will be available for pickup at the Rec Center on Sunday, the 14th. The next scheduled Rec Advisory Board meeting will be held on Thursday, April 18th, at 7:30 a.m. at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Painter, Police Department, I mean, Fire Department Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. The park season is starting to ramp up with the nicer weather. Just wanted to let the public know that our permanent restroom facilities will be officially open after, or the week of April 15th. We currently have several projects underway in the, in the department. We're reconstructing the dugouts at Reagan 6 Baseball Field. Baseball season is underway. So we appreciate their cooperation while we do this project. The second phase of the North Court US-42 median landscaping project was completed last week. We do intend to install, install trees in the medians on April 22nd. Those will be going in. Secondly, the Forestry Department has almost completed their spring tree planting. The streets that were impacted by that were South Court Street, Hillview Way, and North Huntington. And lastly, the Friends of the Cemetery has agreed to donate the purchase and installation of 16 trees at Spring Grove Cemetery, as well as provide spring pruning for all of our trees. So we appreciate their generosity and commitment at Spring Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to take a minute to advise everyone on council and the community. You probably heard that last week, the state and the governor signed the Ohio Motor Fuel Tax Increase. It increases a total of 18 cents on diesel fuel and 10 and 1/2 cents for gas. We were advised by ODOT last week what that meant for the city. It does mean an increase of approximately 62.5% of what we're currently getting for the motor fuel tax. It's a, we're going from 873,000 annually to almost one, a little over $1.4 million. So it's about a $546,000 increase. We're very thankful to the efforts of Senator Obhoff, Representative Hambley, and Governor DeWine for getting this passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. The City Sanitation Department will begin the yard waste program for 2019, starting Monday, May 6th, and will run through November 15th of 2019. We've seen, as we discussed in the Health, Safety, Sanitation Department update, 70% increase with respect to what we collected from 2017 to 2018. So we have a few rules. We define yard waste as grass clippings, leaves, twigs, branches, and shrubbery. We will not pick up dirt, rocks, sod, plastic pots, bags, and food waste or gravel at this time. We ask that the items are put out on the same day as your regular trash pickup. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, communications, petitions, there's none. Unfinished business, none. Introduction to visitors. Members of the public who have been given the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public who have afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances, resolutions. We have ordinance 5419, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $8,850 to Medina County Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, SPCA, for animal-related services for the year 2019.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to bring to the public's attention, unlike the other cities, in fact, most cities, the city does not have an animal control officer. We found it much more prudent and responsible to coordinate our efforts with the Medina SPCA. And they provide these services. This, this request for this year is for less than $9,000. And there would be no way we could even hire somebody part-time and pay them a salary and, and the necessary benefits that go along with that. And I'd, I'd like to also thank Councilman Rose for working with the Board of the SPCA. And we ask that each year, they give us a listing of all of the different activities that they've had in the city, in order for us to analyze and justify the amount of monies that we're giving, we're giving to them. And they've been very gracious in doing that. And I'm not sure if Mr. Rose has anything else, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had the privilege of working with a couple of the directors over the past few years. And they've made a huge improvement over what it once was when, when I started meeting with them. They are going out and collecting funds, raising funds, I should say, on their own. They've streamlined their processes. They've got the new facility over on Guilford, Guilford Road in Guilford Township. It's, it's an honor to be able to work with them. And thank you to the council for continually giving them what they've, or, you know, what, a good stipend and being able to increase it every year as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 55-19 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 55-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2019 concrete street repair program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This is our annual concrete street repair program. It repairs slabs of concrete pavement in various areas all across the city. This year, we're asking for $400,000.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 56-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 57-19, a resolution authorizing the participation in Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of sodium chloride or rock salt.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause, emergency clause and resolution. Mr. Pacoli, why do we need rock salt already?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, we received notification on March 19th of this year with a deadline to turn around the contract. They need a signed ordinance in Columbus by April 19th of this year for the 2019-2020 winter season. We are asking for 2,000 tons. That's the amount we asked for last year. It seemed to serve us well. I mean, it's difficult to anticipate what the upcoming winter's like when we just got out of the, this year's winter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution and order of the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the resolution?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Resolution 57-19 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 58-19, an ordinance amending section 94502G of the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to park restrictions.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you. This ordinance is requesting a change to 94502G, which previously read, "Permit a dog to go unleashed in any areas without being under the reasonable control of a person." It came to our attention that a number of individuals were walking dogs in the parks off-leash. And this posed a conflict for a variety of reasons. For the safety of all park users, I'm requesting that we amend it to, "No person shall have a dog in a city park unless the dog is restrained by a leash not more than eight feet in length and held by the person having the dog in the park, or the dog is inside the fence at our dog park." Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Order 58-19 passes 7-0.
Ordnance 59-19, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure to Signal Service Co. for emergency repairs at the intersections of South Court Street and Coons Avenue for the Street Department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 20th of this year, during a snow event, an unknown vehicle, there was an accident and damaged the traffic signal control box. And that amount for the temporary and the permanent repairs was $33,882. As such, the contractor came out on that very day and performed the temporary repairs. And also, we would like to have that contractor paid. So that's the reason for the emergency clause.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance of the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Ordnance 61-19, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC for the city's property and general liability insurance for the period of April 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2020.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for the emergency clause and getting this to council so late. The city did not receive it from USI until March 29th. So this is our first opportunity to get it before you. The policy actually expired on 4/1/19. So we've asked them to bind the current policy over until council had the opportunity to review and approve this. They claim that the underwriters were going back and forth. This covers every piece of property and equipment that the city owns, as well as our general liability insurance, buildings and everything. And we're going to try next year to start at the end of the year and, and get work, work through this so that we don't have this emergency clause. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Order 61-19 passes 7-0.
In order 62-19, an ordinance amending ordinance number 19518, passed December 10th, 2018, amendments to the 2019 budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to pay for a land acquisition that was discussed at Finance Committee earlier this evening.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Order 62-19 passes 7-0.
Council comments?
Mr. Coin?
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Keith and Deanna on their birth of their new son. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Lamb on achieving another milestone, another birthday today. And he's decided to give it up, the evening up to spend time with his colleagues and, and member of the administration and members of the community. And now, I can, we used to be the same age for like two days. Now, he is a year older than me. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Danny. Appreciate that.
The other only thing I'd like to mention is, last Friday, I got to attend six ribbon cuttings set up by the administration, Mrs. Marshall and the mayor. And I'm, I know people realize how blessed our community is to have the department heads that we have. But when we attend these ribbon cuttings, and like I said, I was, I was so fortunate to be able to attend last Fridays, most of them agreed, or not agreed, they brought up on their own the, the ease it was to start a new business in the City of Medina. And that, that stems from, from our building department to, I mean, it just, it affects every department in the city. And it just, you know, made me proud. And there's, I'm also proud to have six new businesses started. But hats off and compliments to the mayor and his entire administration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Hefinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to say congratulations to the Durham family. I want to say happy birthday to Councilman Lamb. And did you say two days? So was it your birthday too?
Well, now, mine, mine was actually, what is the date today?
It's the 8th.
No, that was three days ago.
Happy birthday to you as well.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Four days ago? Happy birthday. All right. We got him.
Wow.[1648.12]
Lot of Aries up there.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. One, sitting up here, we got to enjoy a beautiful sunset that you folks didn't this evening. And speaking of department heads and the good job they do, this past Thursday, I was out and about, and I was on Hillview Way speaking to a resident. And Mr. Worley pulled up in a truck. And apparently, this resident, Mrs. Lee, I think it was, had a, and not an ongoing issue, but she's just been communicating, you should, we should, could say, with the city as far as the trees. And he spent quite a while discussing the whys and wheres and all the details of what goes into planting